I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for December 14th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Per the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. The city council meeting will be conducted using a hybrid approach. Counselors who are comfortable with in-person meetings will be in the council chambers. Those that aren't will be on Zoom, as will all of the attendees. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and the public all have access to this call. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and we're to include your topic and phone number. Tonight, we will start with a presentation by Police Chief Schmerber to provide an update on the officer-involved shooting incident of November 22nd, 2021, followed by the consent agenda, which includes approval of the November 9th, 2021 city council meeting minutes, approval of the October bank balances, budget report for periods ending October 31st, 2021, approval of the October check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for November 2021, and to certify results of the November 2nd, 2021 elections. Our regular meeting agenda includes Resolution 1202 amending Exhibit A of the solid waste rate schedule from Resolution 1147, revising the solid waste rate structure schedule effective February 1st, 2022, Resolution 1203, which is a resolution adopting a revised master fee schedule and repealing Resolution 1198, and adopting a revised master fee schedule effective January 1st, 2022 for utility rates, appointments to the city commissions, boards, and committees for 2022, and the Gladstone emergency preparedness update. Tammy, could you please do the roll call? Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Hartman?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Garlington?
Here.
Mayor Stempel? Here. Could everyone please stand for the flag sleuth?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to start with the presentation from Police Chief Schmerber, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, I'd like to provide an update on where we're currently at with the officer-involved shooting investigation and the incident itself, and a brief overview, and then moving forward to what's already been accomplished and what we can anticipate moving forward. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to try and answer those questions for you once this is complete, but I hope I cover as many details as I possibly can right now. On November 22nd, 22nd of this year, 2021, Gladstone police officers conducted a traffic stop in the city of Gladstone when it was learned that the suspect had warrants for her arrest. The warrant was for theft and nonviolent out-of-state warrant out of Texas, and Texas wondered her background extradition. During the course of taking the suspect into custody, officers learned that the suspect had two large dogs at her home in Happy Valley. Knowing that the suspect would be returning to the state of Texas, the decision was made to secure the dogs to ensure their safety. It's my understanding that all the animal reports have already been completed and for the purpose of the safety of the dogs, to ensure that they're fed and taken care of. While in the process of securing the animals, the suspect obtained a firearm and shot Sergeant Hill. Officers returned fire, striking the suspect. First aid was rendered to both Sergeant Hill and the suspect by responding officers and deputies. Sergeant Hill received a non-life-threatening bullet wound to the leg and has since been released from the hospital. The suspect was treated at OHSU and has since been released and is in the custody of Clackamas County Jail. Officer Lau, who was on scene, did not sustain any injuries. The case is currently being investigated by the Clackamas County Major Crimes Team, and the Clackamas County District Attorney's Office has oversight of the investigation. What's our process moving forward? That's just a brief summary of what went on. The case is still under investigation. Moving forward, both officers were immediately placed on administrative critical incident leave, which is standard procedure in a critical incident. In order for the officers to return to work, Senate Bill 111 requirements must be met. This is a Senate bill that I believe was established in 2017, requiring certain things before an officer can be put back on the street. Requirements include a psychological evaluation, excuse me, and reacclimation training prior to considering the return to work. I would also need to know that the officers had legal justification to use deadly force before placing them back on duty. Both officers have since been seen by qualified psychologists. The psychologist was chosen for their emergency response, excuse me, law enforcement and military expertise in critical incidents. So it's a very effective, well-known psychologist throughout the metro area and the state. Grand jury for this incident occurred on December 9th of 2021 and determined the use of deadly force was justified by both officers. The grand jury also indicted the suspect on the following charges: attempted aggravated murder of a police officer, two counts; attempted murder in the first degree, two counts; assault in the first degree; attempted assault in the first degree; and two counts of unlawful use of a weapon. If you're familiar with the grand jury, it's comprised of community members throughout Clackamas County, and the district attorney presents the case along with the major crimes unit. And witnesses, the officers testified, and any other witness therefore going forward. The next step for us moving forward is establishing a use-of-force review board. Following our Gladstone Police Department policy 301, the board will review the use of force to determine the following, and will convene once the investigative reports are released to the Gladstone Police Department. The board will consider the following: that the force used was within policy; review of tactics and decisions for lessons learned; to evaluate current equipment and potential needs; determine that the officer's actions fall within department values and expectations; determine if there is a need for policy changes. There's a lot involved in the review board, and this will encompass peers, supervisors, outside-agency evaluators, so it'll be all full-encompassing on this review. And it's no easy task, so we'll be reaching out to plenty of members. And once that is complete, we'll go ahead and move that forward. And if you would like, I can provide an update. So that currently is where we stand right now with the incident. The officers, Sergeant Hill was currently going through physical therapy and recovering. We anticipate Officer Lau return on December 20th. At this point, we have not recognized any reason why we shouldn't bring any of the officers back on duty. Obviously, because of the injury, Sergeant Hill is not able to come back to full duty right away.
Counselor Tracy?
One question, Chief. I'm assuming that the outstanding warrant in Texas is superseded by the criminal behavior here in Oregon, so this suspect would probably remain in Oregon, is that correct?
That's my understanding. These charges are serious enough, and because the warrant in Texas was for a nonviolent warrant, I think this would supersede it.
Yeah, I guess my question to you is that does Texas make that decision with you or with?
I think that the district attorney will make that decision. And I think the district attorney...
Sure, Texas would yield.
Yeah, Texas is gonna have to hold on.
Sure, okay. That's, thank you.
Counselor Todd?
No, just wanted to thank you. That was very detailed. You said that it would take quite a while to sort of, you know, complete any idea of...
Likely, likely, once we get, you're talking about the review board?
Yeah.
Likely about 30 days. There's a lot of information out there that one I can't share publicly right now, and I'm sure there's a lot of questions, because I had a lot of questions that night. I think when everything comes out, you'll understand more about what happened. I wish I could share that tonight, because I think people want to know, I just can't. But we'll move forward. We'll make our decisions based on that review board for our internal moves. Clearly, there will be lessons learned. Someone got hurt, right? We want to know what those lessons are.
Perfect. I appreciate that.
Counselor Garlington?
I don't have any questions. I'm just, thank you for your information, and I'm sorry that all of that happened.
Yep, so are we. Thank you.
Counselor Alexander?
No questions, just appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much, and if there's anything else you need from us... Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Hartman?
Still here. I have no questions, but thank you.
All right, so if there's anything you need from us, let us know.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And if I can just say one thing, one more thing, I know that the council was very concerned that night, and we truly, truly appreciate that. All our members at Gladstone PD felt that, and our community. Our community reached out tremendously big time for us, and for that, I just want to say thank you. Can't tell you how many calls we got privately from people inquiring about Sergeant Hill and Officer Lau and how we're doing as an organization. So I just want to share that with our community too, that we appreciate you as much hopefully as you appreciate us.
Thank you very much. Next, are there any agenda additions or corrections?
I do not have any, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, I would like to add an item 12 to our regular agenda, pulling the topic to be discussed during the executive session into our regular session. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that?
Do you need a second?
No, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Can we, my understanding from the attorney was that that would basically put us in a position so we don't have the option of litigating on our own, is that correct, City Administrator?
What you're agreeing to is to waive the privileged information so that the city attorney can talk about this in an open, regular session.
Roll call vote, please. Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel? Yes, thank you. So we have a new item number 12.
And I think we should go ahead and title that "The Opioid Litigation," so that the general public knows what that agenda item is.
Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or concerns? Counselor Garlington?
None for me.
Counselor Tracy? Counselor Hartman?
None.
Counselor Todd? No. Counselor Alexander?
No, got them all answered today, thanks.
Counselor Ripley? Could I get a motion then?
So moved for the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Garlington and Hartman to accept the consent agenda. Do we have any further discussion, questions, or concerns? I don't see any hands. Could you do a roll call vote, please? Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel? Yes, consent agenda has passed. Do we have any correspondence?
I have nothing.
All right, so a couple of things before we start. First, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today, and as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. Second, as I do before every council meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but we've made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That does not mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then they filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. We appreciate everyone taking the time to participate in this process, and we will have your phones muted and tell it is your time to speak, and if we're not able to mute your phone, please do so on your end. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging, so hopefully everyone can help me do that. First is item number eight, which is Resolution 1202 amending Exhibit A of the solid waste rate schedule from Resolution 1147, revising the solid waste rate structure schedule effective February 1st, 2022. Staff?
Mayor, before we begin, I'm going to recuse myself from both the conversation and from the vote on this particular resolution.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. To be clear, the solid waste rates refers to your garbage rates. And in Gladstone, Gladstone Disposal Company has an exclusive franchise agreement with the city of Gladstone to pick up your garbage, your yard debris, and recycling services within the city. Under the terms of the franchise agreement, which a copy has been placed in your package, because there are several new counselors that have not had to look through this process before, our rates are set by the city council. So tonight, you have a resolution, and you also have Alan Bushy with Gladstone Disposal, who's going to present to you tonight his request for the garbage rate increase. I do want to let you know that they have been with Gladstone for many years, and they are a very reputable company. They do an outstanding job in Gladstone. As a city, staff never receives any complaints on the services that they provide, and they have not asked for a rate increase since 2019. We are very fortunate to have their service here, and with that, Alan, I will let you go ahead and go through your request.
Thank you. Members of the city council, Mayor, thank you for inviting us, having us attend your meeting tonight. As Jackie said, we're requesting a rate adjustment. As you can see in the packet, it has been a few years since we were here last. We intended to come last year, but Metro couldn't make up their mind whether they were going to have one or two rate increases in 2021, and by the time they decided, it was such a big one, we put off until now to come to you. And that is... The biggest reason for our increase is I presented that because of Metro, about 5% of the increase is because of they're raising the rates 17% at the Metro South. And we try to maintain the rates as best we can to make it affordable. Over the years, we have found Gladstone to be a, it's a nice area for us to service. It's very easy to route. We are able to be efficient in our operations. And so as we come tonight, I don't know what else to say. I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. So you're only raising your rates 5%, but Metro raised it 17%?
Well, that's the way it works in our total rate. The disposal is actually 27% of our total rate.
Okay. Okay, that makes more sense. Questions, Counselor Garlington?
Please correct me if I'm wrong. Attachment to, that be 2022? The top, the date on this one? Page 8-5?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington, it's hard to hear you.
I'm sorry. I was asking if the date at the top of 8-5 should be 2022.
Yes, it should. I'm sorry.
Is that it? All right, Counselor Tre, oh, you recused yourself. Counselor Hartman?
I have no questions, thank you.
Counselor Todd?
I have no questions. I do want to tell you that I feel your pain. I know that a lot of rates have gone up, which also affects what you have to charge your customers, and it's very difficult. And even as justified as you can show it, it's still a difficult thing to try and share. And so I appreciate you coming here and filling us in.
Thank you. Counselor Alexander?
I just wonder, so this 18.55%, is that, is that common? Is that every other year? Is that, how's that, how's it go up so high so quick?
That's a Metro question. This was unusually high. In '20, they raised their rates basically 1%. They are, you know, why they raised it so much, you'll have to ask them, you know, like everyone else in the metro area, you know, they don't fully explain everything they do, so we're just, all of a sudden, you know, they'll send out the notice starting July 1st or whenever that they were raised the rates, and that's it.
Okay, and the other thing I thought was interesting when I was reading through here is I've been using you guys for a long time, and I never knew that you picked up couches or chairs or rims or tires. I never knew that till I read this report, so that was interesting. So thank you for your time and for being here.
You're welcome.
I have no questions.
All right, so any further discussion from anybody? Anything else from staff?
I just wanted to add that Clackamas County does review the financial results, its proprietary information of all the franchises. I did confirm with Clackamas County last week that they said this is a very fair and modest rate increase, and that it is within their right to ask for that. So I just wanted to make sure you know that we did talk a little bit further into the financial analysis that Clackamas County did.
Thank you. All right, so would someone like to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1202 amending Exhibit A to Resolution Number 1147 by revising the solid waste rate structure schedule effective February 1st, 2022, and that includes the date change on page 8-5 or 2 of 8 to 2022.
Motion was made by Counselor Garlington and suggested by Counselor Alexander. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see any hands, so could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel? Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is item number nine, Resolution 1203, a resolution adopting a revised master fee schedule and repealing Resolution 1198, and adopting a revised master fee schedule effective January 1st, 2022 for utility rates. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. While I'm introducing this, we're going to bring in our finance consultant, Kathy Brucker, and our public works director, Darren Cana-Piroli, to go over the staff report. I just want to remind everyone that for the past five years, the city councils had to make some very tough decisions about making increases in our water and sewer rates. That was catch-up. And last year, this time, January 2021, it was the last big, significant increase that the city council had to adopt. We are now where we should be with our utility rates, and what we're asking for you to do this evening is to do our annual 4% increase, which is the cost of inflation and maintenance, so that we can continue to work on our infrastructure projects. So I will have finance consultant Brucker go over the staff report for you.
Thank you, Jackie, I appreciate it. Yes, tonight, as Jackie said, we are looking to update the master fees and charges, which we do annually at this time of year, and all we are asking for is the 4% for the water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. This will allow us to continue on the path that we started two years ago, and needless to say, make it a little bit easier for the residents of Gladstone. So we're focusing on that, and then we're also focusing on the 3% annual increase for the right-of-way minimum charges. This is basically assessed against entities such as Lake Oswego for the right-of-way that they have within our city limits. So those increase annually also. Finally, one other thing we are adding this year is a $25 disconnect reconnect fee. We have had several requests of this over the past few years to facilitate residents such as snowbirds or people that for some reason have, whether it be due to fire or some type of damage, have been, are in the need of disconnecting their services for a period longer than 30 days. For $25 disconnect, $25 reconnect fee, we would allow them to do so. We would continue to build, build, excuse me, build the stormwater services that will, that we have no way of discontinuing because of the nature of that utility service. So those are the three main things that we're looking at adjusting this year with our mid-year master fee schedule charges here. So are there any questions on that? Darren, of course, will also be able to answer any other questions you may have.
Do we want to hear from Darren first and then ask questions? Darren, do you have anything to add to this?
I don't really have a whole lot to add. These increases, this is going to be a standard going forward. You know, this year it's 4%, next year it could be less. This is going to help keep money in our budget moving forward so that we are able to continue doing projects and keep up the maintenance that needs to be done within the city. So, you know, other than that, I don't really have a whole lot. You know, nobody likes to do increases, but you know, that's kind of the nature of the beast right now, and you know, hopefully moving forward, the, you know, the price of everything will go down, and we won't have to increase as much in the future, but reality is, is right now, we're sitting right around 4%.
And if I may add to that also too, we have included in the next year's budget a 4% increase also. It can always be reevaluated, but that is currently what is in the budget.
All right, thank you. Counselor Garlington, any questions or concerns?
Of course I'm concerned, I have to pay the water bill, but no questions, thank you.
Counselor Tracy?
No question.
Counselor Hartman?
Thank you. I just need, just a clarification. I'm looking at the graph on page 9-11. Can you just clarify why what looks like our water rates, the $39.39, why seemingly higher than some larger cities?
I can't clarify as to why they are charging the rates they are. These are the charges that we have determined are necessary to be able to pay for the treatment and the collection within our services here. Needless to say, there is a portion of there that is the NCCWC. We purchase water from them, so we have to be able to recover the money to be able to pay them for that water. What the situation is with Oak Lodge in West Lynn, Oregon City, and Milwaukee, they may have, not Oak Lodge, but West Lynn, Oregon City, Milwaukee, may have different water sources, and they are also, they're just different structures in that sense. It's really, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison in that way. It's really, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison in, in that way.
Sure.
If I can add, if I can add to that, too, if you remember back in July, we also did the pass-through credits and stuff like that. They add their water rates at different times than what we do. And so you're looking at realistically a last year's water rate. Their rate will also increase going forward.
Okay. Thank you both.
All right, Council Todd.
Kathy, can you fill me in on the disconnect reconnect charge? So at this time, we haven't ever charged anything for those scenarios?
Yes, it is. Previously, we had been under the assumption that the sewer disconnect for both Wes and Oak Lodge was not possible. And it's not necessarily that we're disconnecting sewer, but Wes and Oak Lodge are both more than willing to stop billing a customer as long as we inform them of who that customer is. For our water services, yes, we are able to turn that off, you know, the water actually off so that it is not, there is no chance it's going to be impacting the system. And as I say, this is just to accommodate customers that would be off for over a thirty-day period, so over billing cycle. Currently, we have one person in town that has been requesting it due to a fire that was on his property, and it's a slow rebuild for him, for him to, he does not need water sewer services. So as far as billing him, you know, we're, we're trying to accommodate those types of situations.
Okay, thank you.
Council Alexander.
Yeah. So when I read this before I even got here, and I, so it's already budgeted and it's needed for the infrastructure project. So are there priorities for the money? I mean, you, you do the increase, you get the amount of money, and it's for infrastructure. Are there priorities in the infrastructure? Is there, half of it goes to our priorities? Some of it goes to emergencies or something that comes up? How's that money being managed?
Darren, if you want to chime in on this, but I would definitely say that this is to infrastructure. And part of it, though, at the four percent rate, of course, is just the cost of, of the cost of living increases that we all have to deal with as far as the cost of supplies, personnel, you know, those everyday costs that are also increasing at a certain percentage every year. As we've recently heard, the cost of living is currently running, or CPI is currently running about almost seven percent. So this is helping us to, as the city, to be able to offset some of those costs.
All right. Thank you.
Council Ripley.
I have no questions.
All right. Anything else from staff?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number one two zero three, a resolution repealing the master fee schedule adopted under Resolution number one one nine eight and adopting a new master fee schedule.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Council Hartman and seconded by Council Garlington. Do we have any further discussion, questions or concerns? I don't see any hands. Could you do a roll call vote, please? Councilor Todd.
Yes.
Councilor Garlington.
Yes.
Councilor Ripley.
No.
Council Alexander.
Yes.
Council Tracy.
Hi.
Council Hartman.
Hi.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes. Passed. Thank you. Next is item number ten, which is actually three pieces. Appointments to the city commissions, boards and committees for two thousand and twenty-two. We have one application for the Audit Committee where we have one vacancy. We have one application for the Budget Committee and we have one application for the Budget Committee and three vacancies. And we have four applications for Planning Commission and two vacancies. So we're going to take this one by one, starting with the Audit Committee. Staff.
In your packet tonight, you have one application from Steve Johnson for the Audit Committee. There are currently four Audit Committee members available and there is a vacancy. And I believe how we're going to do this is the same as in the past. Do you see upon the screen?
We will in a moment.
Recorder will call off each City Councilor, and for this one, you can either say yes or no.
And when started up, I believe you're having a hard time being heard. It looks like Council Hartman was trying to register. One, do you want to say that again? Sorry.
On the Audit Committee, there is one applicant, Steve Johnson. And there are currently four Audit Committee members available. There is one vacant term on the Audit Committee that expires twelve thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-three. The City Recorder has placed a spreadsheet up on the screen and will do a roll call vote for this one. You can either say yes or no.
Any questions? All right, Tammy, go ahead.
Councilor Garlington.
No.
Councilor Todd.
Yes.
Councilor Hartman.
Yes.
Council Tracy.
Yes.
Council Alexander.
No.
Councilor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
No. So Steve Johnson is now on the Audit Committee.
Okay, for the next item, you have appointment to the Budget Committee. There are three vacant terms. You received one application. And also, just as a reminder, we are currently in a biennial budget, so the Budget Committee will not reconvene in two thousand and twenty-two. And we will actively still try to recruit for the other two vacancies, should the City Council appoint Patrick Smith tonight. So same process, the City Recorder will do a roll call vote, and you can answer either yes or no for Patrick Smith.
Any questions? Nope, go ahead.
Council Alexander.
Yes, yes.
Council Tracy.
Yes.
Council Hartman.
Yes.
Councilor Todd.
Yes.
Council Garlington.
Yes.
Council Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes. Smith is now on the Budget Committee.
And finally, we're going to appoint to the Planning Commission. In your packet, you have four applications for two positions. For this item, you will see that all four of the applicants are listed on the vote sheet. The City Recorder will ask each elected official to pick your two, and then we will see where the majority lies. The applicants are Steve Johnson, Andrea Langston, Jonathan Lewis and Jennifer Volbedo.
Are any questions? Go ahead.
Council Hartman.
Are we doing Johnson first? Sorry.
Select two of the four.
Oh, just select. Okay, Langston and Lewis.
Councilor Todd.
Langston and Volbedo.
Council Garlington.
Langston and Volbedo.
Council Ripley.
Johnson and Langston.
Council Alexander.
Langston and Volbedo.
Council Tracy.
Langston and Volbedo.
Mayor Stempel.
Langston and Volbedo. So Andrea Langston remains on Planning Commission and Jennifer Volbedo. Congratulations and welcome to Planning Commission.
And both of those terms will be through December of two thousand and twenty-five, correct?
And thank you, everybody who applied. It's nice to see four applications for two positions.
Concur.
We are scheduling the orientation in January.
Yes, January nineteenth at five thirty PM via Zoom, and we will start marketing that right after the holiday.
Great. Okay, next is item number eleven, Gladstone Emergency Preparedness Update by Fire Chief Huffman, Police Chief Schmerber and Community Services Manager Kirk Patrick.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Of all of you seeing the severe weather forecasting that we're experiencing, including probably as early as tomorrow, we take this very seriously. And so tonight, the chiefs wanted to provide you an update on how we are preparing for emergencies, in particular in relations to using the senior center as a resource center. We also have our Community Services Manager Tiffany Kirkpatrick with us on Zoom tonight, and I believe Chief Huffman is going to start off. Okay, Chief Schmerber.
Okay. Good evening again, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. First, I, I think I want to take the opportunity to introduce, so everybody's aware, the emergency management team are what we consider the emergency management team, which is primarily almost department heads. Tiffany Kirkpatrick, Community Services Manager, Fire Chief Rick Huffman, Public Works Director Darren and, and our City Administrator Jackie Betts and myself. We're typically the ones getting together and, and running the operations of the city with regards to emergency management. One thing we heard over the last, at least last two and a half years, that Chief Huffman and I have been here is, is communication. And really, that's been our, our struggles is to get, have the ability to communicate with the entire city. We can use social media. We can do a lot of different things electronically and get messages out. But what we don't have, or what we didn't have the ability to do was what about addressing those and serving those that can't rely on social media, can't rely on electronics or unable to charge or have power? So how do we address this? We've talked about for almost a year now, a community resource center. And we think now that Tiffany's with us, and she's a great, great part of this, this new team. We appreciate her so much. But getting the senior center up and running, as we talked about, a community resource center is, is probably the most critical thing we can do. And we started that process now. We put in your packets kind of the emergency resource center guidelines and what the purpose is. And if you've had the opportunity to, to look at that, it really spells out what we, what we're looking at for the use of the resource center and the mission. Really, the mission is to provide information to community members of Gladstone during emergency conditions and connect them with essential services. We're not looking to be a place to, to hold people overnight, but our purpose is to connect people. Our purpose is really to connect people with services, hold briefings during significant events like the fire incidents we had last year, where it would have been great to have briefings for the community of, of PGE, our city operations and where we're going and how we do, really get that information. Now, while at the same time, we're working with groups like GEMS and other volunteers to prepare, do preparedness training for our community, be there on site to help run that, that center itself and, and offset the work of Tiffany, who will really have oversight of that, of that facility and be supported by the Emergency Operations Center. So we've kind of tied this down as, as tight as we can. And, and although it's new, there will be hiccups as we activate this, because there always is in emergencies. We, I, we'll be better for it. We'll be better than we were during the last event. And that's our goal, is always just to get better, serve our community, get our community, get as, community members the services they need. So as you, as you look through, as you look through this, some of the things that, that we're currently doing is we're researching and ordering equipment for that center to be prepared, such as the, the sign that maybe will go up front. And, and that's a whole nother process in itself. Anybody, well, we're all work government, so we know what kind of process that is. But other essential needs of equipment like easels, something very simple as easels, signage, directional signage, computers, just standalone laptop computers, those types of things. Getting, getting the volunteer groups ready to go inside and work and already given them assignments that they're enjoying and, and working towards, having, having maybe kits available, getting out in the community when we open up for more events and, and doing more of that preparedness. But being on site also and helping run that emergency resource center, that's going to be the critical thing. And they're out there, we've challenged them, we've been out there asking them to get more volunteers. We just need more volunteers. We need a, we need, we need more people to help us, because not everybody's going to be able to get to the resource center at any given time. So we'll be able to, to scatter those bodies in and help fill shifts. We don't anticipate this being a twenty-four-seven operation, but the event will determine how long we can and should stay open, along with the resources we have. So the senior center right now is a great facility, has all the options we need, even if we need a kitchen for whatever reason. That's there, a place to get warm, a place to charge phones, a place to get information, a place for somebody just to go if they're lonely during an event, and they can get resources. And a place that hopefully we can provide them resources throughout Clackamas County. We don't, we don't have the infrastructures for people overnight, but we do have chaplains and we do have churches that are willing to help during these events and, and can open shelters when needed. So that's what we're leaning on. It's, it's, I, I want to say it's early, but it's not early, but it's a work in progress. And if we had to open the doors today, we could. It may not be perfect, but it'd be better than what we had last year. And that's what we're looking for, just to get better. So I hope I've covered as much on that as we can. I, I think this document outlines a lot of it. If you have any questions for Chief Huffman or Tiffany Kirkpatrick, I, please you guys jump, join in if I, if I miss something. But welcome for questions.
All right. Thank you. Council Garlington.
I have no questions, but thank you very much for that.
Council Tracy.
Appreciate it, Chief. And I think that, you know, the lesson learned that you teach us with is important. Last year was a struggle, but I think you did really well. Union groups, City Councilors and others who involved were kind of rallying the community helped out a lot. And I think the coordination between these community groups, whether it's council-led or just citizen-led is getting important. And I think that the votes last year were looking for that.
Yes.
The facility, for lack of a better term. It'd be good to be prepared coming out of pandemic. I know that was one of the biggest challenges. It's not the biggest challenge. You know, you, you all did fantastic in twenty-one, you know, with Chief Huffman, the situation, the generators, things of that nature. We grow there at four o'clock in the morning, and I know you're at nine o'clock at night. So, you know, good news to you. Thank you for taking the board. I think this is a great opportunity for us. And I think that coordination with our other citizens and folks really, another efforts is going to be important.
Thank you. And, and, and the comment of the communities, and I just remember the cooking and the chili was awesome, by the way. And, and I know.
All right, Council Hartman.
I have no questions. Thank you for, for all that you do.
Council Todd.
I have no questions either.
I guess maybe, I, my question, I don't know that this is all initial. Is this on the city website? So that people are going to start to know to look towards what.
Yeah.
If it's, if you have a snowstorm and a rainstorm tomorrow, how are we going to get people to start thinking of the senior center?
It's a great question.
And Council, and that's why we're, we're at this situation now, is, is we've had to do that through the water main break, boil water, the fire evacuation notices, the, in all the incidents, the ice storm, the heat wave. And that's what we've learned, is that there needs to be communication, but we're not there yet. So we'll probably do what we've done before, which is all the normal distribution, social media, website. We have a, a running ticker tab on the, on the website. We do flyers and we try to pass those out to get to the homebound. And now that Tiffany is on board, and I have to, to compliment her in front of all of you. She's one of the best communicators and collaborators for community members that I've ever been around. She's one of the best communicators and collaborators for community members that I've ever been around. And I hope I'm not setting you up. But I believe we're in a perfect position to take the next step, which is to continue our analog signing, if you will, and social media signing and messaging. But what we want the community to end up knowing is that the senior center is where to go for information in a disaster, emergency, or event that has community actions needed. So that is the end goal, but we're going to keep doing what we've done. Sandwich board signs, flyers, and electronic postings.
Yeah, I think what's important is a little bit of new school with some of the old school attached to it. I think that's what we call it.
Counselor Alexander.
No, this is just a great implementation, awesome organization. And I've been down to the senior center, and Tiffany does do an outstanding job, I felt her. And just let me know where you need me.
Yeah, I appreciate it. For the record, this is really Chief Huffman's work. I just took credit for it early on.
I have to add to that just briefly, is that we're not alone. This information was kind of gathered off of other people's resource centers. So it's not necessarily an idea that we have, but it's more specific to Gladstone. Other counties have more resources. But I do believe that this will really kind of reduce the risk. We had significant incidents, especially during the heat and the ice, that had some bad outcomes. And we just want people to know that there's help out there, and we're, go for it. And so.
Counselor Ripley.
No questions.
All right, I just have a couple. One of the missing pieces during the wildfire was the American Red Cross connection. Has, do we have a better way to handle that? I know it wasn't on us, it was that they were spread so thin in the region. But that was missing, and I'm so thankful that you all felt that let's just make the decisions now and worry about the paperwork later, because that's exactly what we needed to do. But they need to be a partner, clearly.
Thanks, Mayor. I can tell you, I was the one that actually talked to the Red Cross during that event. And they felt really doubt on the phone, because they thought it was true. And they told me that we might get back to 24, 48 hours. That's because of the overwhelming situation.
Yeah.
But it also added to our need to talk about this, and Don and I, and Tiffany's trying to get together. It's about all resource coordination, what's available, and what capability is, and can handle that to the needs of the community that fit the ones in need most. So that's going to happen throughout these situations. And I think one thing we didn't touch on was the need for volunteer coordination. That's not one group, it's all groups. And donations, that's another key factor in this, for the senior center. Or with all of the volunteers, so we really leverage the best use of each one of them.
Are we going to start ramping up the CERT team? Are we going to identify other resource or teams that need to be a part of the equation?
Yeah, you know, CERT is a county, really a county organized team. So we're always going to be liaising with them and keeping connection with them. And hopefully, there's members on CERT that live in the city of Gladstone, right? More importantly, though, we're going to continue that, but also on a two or three different pronged approach is we want to build GEMS up for the Gladstone Emergency Management Support. We want to build up, or utilize our volunteers and neighbors helping neighbors, that we have a lot of applications for, and we did that during the heat wave, when we had the facilities opened up. So there's a lot of options still there. Like I said, we're not going to be perfect, but we'll open the doors. And Tiffany will make sure that those doors are open, and we'll support her anywhere we can.
Another question or concern is essential facilities, because wildfires, it's not going to matter if you're in an essential facility, not unless the fire's here in town. But earthquakes, floods, these other big-eyed, big catastrophes that could definitely happen. I don't think the senior center is an essential facility. Is that correct?
Go ahead.
So the senior center is a city facility, and can be designated as a key infrastructure.
Okay.
I think the larger issue here is, we get to an event that's large and that impactful. That's one of the other things we're trying to coordinate is, any organizations like GEMS and other volunteer organizations that can give the exact preparedness classes to individuals.
Okay.
That's how we navigate through those major events that are totally overwhelming. And so preparedness is also part of this plan for community.
So the police department is an essential facility, but I think that's the only public building until the Public Works Building is finished?
You're talking about a critical infrastructure built.
Yes.
Brick and mortar building.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Okay, so we all come to the police department if there's an earthquake or something. Well, that's where everybody's going to go. And the other thing, which is just a no-brainer, I just want to make sure that the food pantry people, the director is looped in, so if there's these events, they can provide food when needed.
Tiffany, do you want to take this?
Yes, hello. Yes, of course, we are very looped in to her and work with her daily, actually, with the food boxes. So definitely, she'll be in the loop on all communication, and we'll probably work together to make it a haven for folks, and make sure they have the right nutrition as well.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that. It's so important. Any other questions? Counselor Garlington.
Can you just go over slightly how to become a member of the GEMS? Tell us how we're going to get that started. Or if a person is listening, where do they go?
If they reach out to either Chief Huffman or myself, or even Tiffany Kirkpatrick, we can get them connected. If they want to reach out to us, the email, it's on the website. They can reach out to us directly, and we can put them in contact immediately with a GEMS coordinator, and get them signed up. We'll get the volunteer, have them fill out the volunteer packet. We'll do the quick background on them to ensure that, you know, they meet the current standards, and then we'll move forward, and get them in the training, and get them part of the meetings.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on that. Can we get back online, like a PDF?
I want to say it's already online, but I'll confirm. I'll confirm. I thought we did it last year, especially with neighbors helping neighbors. And I think we were just going to tweak that form a bit to just make it just a volunteer form, not just neighbors helping neighbors.
And Counselor Todd, yes, there is a volunteer application online on the city's website.
And do you have to select what you're volunteering?
There are options on there that you can select for what you're wanting to volunteer for, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else from staff? No, thank you very much for all of this work, and the last year and a half has shown that it's very necessary. So not all at the same time, which it seemed like it was last fall, but thank you very much. Next is item number 12, which I called the opioid settlement participation, but it's litigation. So staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to hand this over to City Attorney Chad Jacobs to walk you through what he's asking the council to consider.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I start, if I could just do a public service request, I guess is how I would phrase it, is that for those in the council chambers, please make sure that you're speaking directly into your microphone, because it really gets difficult to hear some of you when you're not talking directly into the microphone. And that's, we'll go for the recording as well for the permanent record that we keep. So tonight, we have a request before you related to national litigation. As you may be aware, and I'm just going to provide a little bit of background that I provided via email, so the public has a better understanding of what we're discussing. As you may know, there's litigation that many local governments across the country have filed against both manufacturers and distributors of opioids due to the effects that those drugs had on local communities. In Oregon, 10 counties and one city actually filed lawsuit, and their litigation was brought together, and it wasn't combined, but it was just sort of brought together for case management purposes, and something called the National Multi-District Litigation, the MDL, which brought together about 3,000 different lawsuits related to the opioid epidemic. As part of that process, there's been a global settlement with all of the distributors, as well as one manufacturer, which is Janssen, which is commercially known as Johnson &amp; Johnson. There's other potential settlements on the horizon, such as with Purdue Pharma, but some of those are a little more complicated because they involve bankruptcy issues. But under the terms of these national proposed settlement offers, what the defendants want to do is get as many local governments as possible to participate in the settlement, to sort of end their liability related to this issue. So the settlements are incentive-based, meaning that the more jurisdictions that a state has participate, the greater amount of money that that state overall will receive. To the extent that you don't get 100% participation, the funding levels from the settlement for that state go down. And it's not proportionate, sort of, you know, your share would just be decreased, but it goes down a pretty decent amount, up to 25% pretty quickly. So both the state and the litigating parties in Oregon are really pushing hard to try to get those people who did not file lawsuits directly to participate in these settlement agreements. As of right now, what they're doing is having any jurisdictions that had a population in excess of 10,000 people as of 2019 to participate. And if Oregon can get 100% participation from jurisdictions with 10,000 population or more, then they'll get 100% of the proceeds that are supposed to come to Oregon. Based on this incentive-based model, because Gladstone had a population in excess of 10,000 in 2019, we've been invited to participate in the settlement. If we decide to participate in the settlement, what that would mean is that we would be foregoing our rights to file litigation against the defendants who are settling, in this case, again, the distributors, as well as Johnson &amp; Johnson. In addition, what we would need to do is participate in an interstate funding agreement between the state and the litigating, and local litigating entities, about how the settlement money would be distributed in Oregon. The current term sheet that exists between the state, which is pretty finalized, would have 55% of the funds going to local jurisdictions, and 45% of it being retained by the state. Of that 55% going to local jurisdictions, Gladstone would be entitled to a whopping 0.12, basically 12 rounded up percent of the amount of the funding, which would equate to about $208,329, assuming that we get 100% participation. If we don't get 100% participation, that amount will decrease. The money will be distributed between nine and 18 years, depending on if it's coming from the manufacturers or Johnson &amp; Johnson. So it's not going to be a substantial amount of money on an annual basis. But if the city doesn't want to take the money directly, the city has the option to direct that money to Clackamas County, who can spend that money locally. And Clackamas County is one of the litigating entities, so they will be receiving money and participating in the settlement. The money from the settlement has to be used for specific purposes related to abiding the epidemic. Examples of what they can be used for is training for first responders, as well as prevention or treatment programs, and as well as education programs. Again, if the city does not feel like it, you know, has the resources or ability to want to spend this money directly, we can direct that money to Clackamas County, who can then make sure that money gets spent locally. Our office is recommending that our clients participate in this settlement for two reasons. One is that most local governments the size of Gladstone don't really have an affirmative litigation program. We're not going to turn around and sue the manufacturers or distributors on our own. It's just really not worth the time and money to do so, based on the amount of damages that we could allege. You know, so based on that, we're not really foregoing much by participating in the settlement. The second reason is sort of what I've been alluding to, is that if we don't participate, that has a direct negative effect on the rest of the state, as well as our other local jurisdictions. The amount of money that they receive for their litigation and participation in the settlement decreases based on our not participating. So even if we don't want the money, and we don't want to spend the money directly, and we can give that money to the county and still ensure that the state of Oregon and the local jurisdictions receive the maximum amount possible from these settlement discussions. If we decide to keep the money ourselves, just like any sort of program like this, there's going to be reporting requirements. That's still being negotiated between the state and the litigating entities, and that'll be a part of the interstate funding agreement once it's finalized. The state unfortunately has sort of dragged its heels on reaching a final agreement in this interstate funding agreement. And so, under the national settlement proposal, any jurisdiction that wants to participate must agree to do so no later than January 2, 2022. So just around the corner, a couple of weeks from now. Because the interstate funding agreement is still being negotiated, and this is your last meeting, we're coming to you now with just the basic term sheet and outlines of the agreement, and asking that you do two things. One, authorize participation from the city. And then, two, delegate authority to the city administrator to sign these documents once they're finalized, as long as they are, you know, as long as the basic terms that we've described tonight don't change. If you do that, then once everything is finalized within the next couple of weeks, we will be able to go ahead and execute those documents before the January 2 deadline to participate. So that's everything in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Again, our office is recommending participation. One, because we don't really think Gladstone would be giving out much, and two, because it helps the state, as well as our other local jurisdictions.
Anything else from staff on this?
Staff would contribute to City Attorney's Office that we should opt into this settlement agreement. I have two chiefs here that have some great ideas on how this money can be used, not something we need to talk about tonight, that can come back to the city council. But we do agree that we should opt into this program.
Okay, Counselor Garlington.
So my question, actually, when I read this this afternoon, was what does our police chief and our fire chief think of this? Is this something that Gladstone needs? Do we need to be a part of this? And clearly, the answer was yes, and so I have no further questions.
All right, Counselor Tracy.
No questions, thanks.
Counselor Hartman.
I just had a question about the payout. So it said nine to 18 years. So I guess it will begin in nine years, or it could be paid out over, starting 2022, for nine years.
Great question, thanks. As I understand it, it'll begin once the settlement is finalized. And the distributors, I believe it's the distributors, will pay their portion over nine years. And the Johnson &amp; Johnson will pay theirs over 18 years. So there will be a little overlap, we're getting two payments for nine years, and then the remainder of the Johnson &amp; Johnson payment for the second nine years.
Do you have any clue why it's taking that long?
I just think the amount of the global settlement is in the billions of dollars. So I think it's just so they've got operating money to continue to operate and still pay out the money.
I'm sure they have plenty of money, but I know that's not a you thing. No, I mean, as someone whose family has been affected by opioids, I say let's bleed them dry, to be quite honest. Like, this is, you know, we've seen the amount of overdoses that have happened within our city just this past year. So I certainly think that this is definitely something that we can benefit from. That's all.
All right, Counselor Todd.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Counselor Alexander. Counselor Ripley.
No questions.
All right, so exactly how do you want us to word these? Anyway, how do you want us to word this?
Sure, I would suggest that we have a motion authorizing the city's participation in the settlement, and delegating authority to the city administrator to execute the release and interstate funding agreement once they are finalized.
Did everybody get that? Who's going to be brave enough to make that motion?
They'd just say so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Garlington, seconded by counselors Alexander and Hartman. Do we have any further discussion, questions, or concerns? I don't see any hands. Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel. Yes, thank you very much. Next is business carried forward. Do we have any business carried forward, staff?
I have one item, and as you all know, this is the last meeting. And I will be taking a break at the end of this week for a couple of weeks. But prior to that break, the department head is having their retreat this Thursday. And we'll be going back to. And we'll be going back through the city council goals and doing what's called a hearing review report. So that information will come to the city council hopefully at the January meeting, so you can see all of the wonderful things that we accomplished this past year. But also, we're going to put together our work plan for 2022. As you know, the city council goals are two here, you adopted right now. So we will not be having a strategic planning session. But we will have a hearing review and a work plan for 2022 that will help for the mayor's state of the cities address as we get in to the first part of January. But it's more likely to be possibly the first meeting. But I wanted to let you know that we will do that work on Thursday.
Thank you, and then you're going to be gone from when to when?
I will be gone the 20th and back on the 31st.
To the 31st, all right. Thank you. All right, next is business from the audience. Thank you for participating in business from the audience this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of our local government meeting. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input of our citizens into consideration. However, in order to comply with Oregon Public Meetings laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but instead of time for us to listen, our city administrator and clerk are taking notes in case an item requires further action. Go ahead and call, I think there's only two for tonight. The first is Mindy Garlandon.
Hi, I am coming to you as a resident of Gladstone. At the June 2021 city council meeting, this council received a letter authored by Milwaukee resident Lyndon Neese dated June 7th, 2021. The letter asked the council to remove Bill Osborne from the Traffic Safety Committee. The letter stated it was reviewed, approved, and agreed via electronic signature, then listed 49 names. Of these 49 names, 10 of the names are not Gladstone voters. Then the same letter was submitted again by Lyndon Neese during the investigation. This time, there were 55 names in the signature area. I did not take time to compare the list, but clearly there is a six-name difference. Then again, on December 9th, 2021, I received a corrected version of the letter with no indication of what exactly was corrected. But I noticed right away that there were still 55 names in the signature list. However, I also noticed that there were missing names from the previous 55-person list. So clearly, this list of signatures was once again changed. In my opinion, the letter, the list of signatures, and the author are clearly uncredible. If it was in my power, within my power, I would ask this letter to be removed from all areas in our system. Unfortunately, it is not. I want everyone to know that this is my opinion and my opinion of the year.
Thank you. Next. The next is Bill Osborne.
Hi, Bill Osborne here. This witch hunt, I mean investigation, you wasted our tax dollars on, isn't even worth the paper it's printed on. First off, the person didn't even take time to check it before submitting it, collecting our money, and laughing all the way to the bank. You should all be ashamed of wasting our tax dollars on this sham. Says there was no definitive evidence. However, there was definitive evidence, but the investigator didn't proofread, spell check, or even get their facts right. Again, we the people have the utmost faith in you spending our tax dollars in the wisest possible way. And that was sarcasm in case you missed it. If Matt Tracy hadn't launched his racist attack, there'd be no documentation of his unprofessional and vile actions to distribute. Yes, Matt discriminating against someone based on their race isn't legal or right, even if they're white. Regarding the discussion at Fred Meyer's, or was it Safeway? The investigator can't tell the difference. The daughter of the most spiteful and hateful person I've ever met here in Gladstone happened to be there and overheard a conversation. I always shop on Friday for the $5 Friday specials, not on Saturday. My daughter also accompanies me every Friday to Safeway. She wasn't mentioned in the fabrication, I mean, the statement. Bill is short for William, medication is prescribed to our less exciting legal names. Also, Tracy Todd's daughter has taunted me on numerous occasions on social media, so she is far from unbiased. I find it ironic that the reporter and the investigator let everyone know they were protected from retaliation. What was the point of the investigation if not to give the council another target to attack? Tyrants need to punish those who spread the truth. As far as how I obtained these papers, it doesn't matter, and I would never reveal my source. I will say, while all you look in the obvious directions, that is what was expected. That's why my little bird felt safe. Very predictable, to say the least. The attack on Jackie Betts should never have happened. She felt so moved as to handwrite three pages asking for help from the council. Some of you failed her. And all of Gladstone. You say it was resolved, while many victims feel powerless to do anything but make accommodations. In this situation, she had already asked for your help. She realized it wasn't coming. Shame on Matt Tracy for his actions, and shame on the council members for their lack of action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is business from the council, Counselor Garlandon.
Sorry about that. So as we all know, the senior center is up and running. We've had some really great meetings with the new community director there, Tiffany. Activities, the lunches, and the friendships are all available. You only have to show up. And the staff at the senior center wants to see you, so please come back. On 11/15, the Clackamas County Task Force meeting and the Clackamas County, or it was the Clackamas County Task Force Library Meeting. And the Clackamas County and Gladstone are still moving forward in a forward direction with our library build, designed to be complete in the spring of 2022. And I will be looking ahead towards the end of 2023 in hopes to see an open and inviting door at the corner of Portland Avenue and Dartmouth. So on December 1st, along with many other residents and business owners of Clackamas County, I sat in on a Clackamas County Town Hall titled I-205 Tolling and Regional Mobility Pricing Project. The consensus was, please go to votontolls.com. It is an effort by a lot of people to bring everyone together and basically make it so that in order for Clackamas County or for Oregon to toll Clackamas County, that they have to vote on, they would have to pass a vote on it. I just want to, you know, this is my personal opinion on this. I can't understand why the state of Oregon is hell-bent on tolling Clackamas County and not the entire state of Oregon. It's not fair in any way. I think I would be a little bit more lenient towards my view of paying a toll if I knew that everybody on I-5 was paying them, and the people driving on the brand-new freeways on 26 were paying them, and everybody driving all the way out 84 was paying them. But no, it's just going to be Clackamas County. And yeah, they can all say that their turn will come, but how much do we have to pay before that turn comes? Not fair, in my opinion. Okay, I'm off my soapbox on that. Remember to get online to add your two cents to the Meldon Bar site plan. You can get to that through the city's website. And it's really easy to find. Go to the webpage, and then it's under news and announcements, and then you just click. It just takes a couple of minutes. And it's really important that everybody, you know, get on and state what they're looking for. It just, it gives our site plan people a platform to start this build on, you know, this new site plan on. And, you know, even if you want to see the, you know, the old standard underwater basket weaving or whatever you want to see at the park happen, more activities, more gardening, more anything, or a total change of venue. State your wishes there. It's really important that we have as many, we've got many, many, many voters in Gladstone. And it just, it's really important that everybody get on. And this is a big park, and it's a huge part of our city. And I would just really appreciate it if we could get, you know, even 500 people would be just awesome to hear from on that. That would be really good. We got an email saying that there are warming shelters in Clackamas County and in Oregon City and Malala. And I know that we've touched on that a little bit tonight. And I was happy to see that you can call 211. And/or you can get on www.211.info. So I'm not exactly sure. I don't know where that leads you. I'm just throwing that out there so that if you see somebody that looks really cold or something like that, my guess is you can call the police and you can call 211 and you can do what you can do. But it's really important to check on one another when it gets cold like this, especially if the lights go out. And, you know, as we all know, after last year, 24 hours with no electricity is really hard. So that, and I'd like to end just by wishing everyone a very Merry Christmas and blessings for the New Year. I'd like you, I'd like to thank everyone for the holiday lights. I can't tell you how many people drive up and down all the streets nice and slow, really slow. And they're looking at the lights, and we've seen the fire truck go around, and that's been really fun. And I just hope that everybody has a really good, quiet, maybe firework-free New Year. That would be great, so. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Counselor Tracy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to read an email that was addressed to me Wednesday, 7/29/2020. Email copies, Jackie Betts, Mayor Stempel, Lyndon Neese, sent by Mayor Stempel to me. So actually, this is not the email to me. This is an email to the mayor and Jackie from Gladstone citizen, same date. It's just hard to read our email trails. Good evening, Jackie and Tamara. I want to reach out to you and share my anger about the moderation last night. This is the day after the listening session on racism. After multiple concerns raised about needing a moderator familiar with racism were ignored, Mr. Morgan ran the meeting without any meaningful commentary whatsoever. Mayor Stempel, you also shared no empathy for, nor any story nor reflection, as many participants had hoped, knowing that the listening session was loosely modeled after a similar one in Sandy, Oregon. I will limit my comments in this email tonight, as you were both present for the entire session and can't deny the truth of what I'm saying. You were warned. You expressed no sympathy and afterwards held a closed-door meeting. That's the key. I am beyond disappointed in your role in this, and I included in Counselor Neese because she was an exception to this and has been communicative with me personally in regards to this. I wanted to also be aware of my anger. On Thursday, August 13th, Mayor Stempel, CC and Jackie Betts sent me this following email. On Tuesday, July 28th, the city of Gladstone held the social equity listening session. The following day, July 29th, city administrator Jackie Betts and myself received the aggressive email below from a citizen. Per the email, Counselor Neese was copied in on the email and had apparently been in communication with this Gladstone citizen. My immediate concern is with his accusation that Ms. Betts and I held a closed-door meeting immediately following the session. I would like to know who's responsible for giving him this information. Interesting. I'm concerned that information is being released that has no basis in fact and what benefit this false information would have other than to further incite a situation and target individuals. The only people at city hall during the following, during and following the meeting were myself, Ms. Betts, Tammy Bannock, and Counselor Mercero, all of which know this accusation is completely false. I left the building with Counselor Mercero, which we can review on video to assure everyone I did not return to the city for this supposed closed-door meeting. For clarity purposes, even if a meeting did occur, it is perfectly legal and would have been appropriate to debrief after the listening session. However, we did not. I'm reaching out to our city council to find out who specifically spread this rumor and if you may have any information related to it. Kind of an accusatory email. I'm not sure if other counselors received it. No one told me that they did. My response immediately after, two hours after receiving that email to both Mayor Stempel and city administrator Betts. It is my understanding Mr. Hillner misunderstood Mr. Morgan's closing arguments to mean the city council would be meeting immediately after the listening session to discuss the session. Though Mr. Morgan clearly stated any deliberation would be at a later date, this important detail apparently escaped our Gladstone citizens' attention. To the best of my knowledge, no counselor communicated any information regarding a secret meeting taking place after the listening session. And to accuse any counselor of doing so isn't particularly helpful. There is no smoke, there is no fire. Signed, Counselor Tracy. With that, I offer my resignation tonight. I'm done. I'm not going to do this anymore. I will no longer listen to people try to write my history or character assassinate me. We're done. I will be serving a letter tomorrow morning. The city will receive all of the city property that I have in my possession by tomorrow, close of business. I'm finished. Thank you very much. A lot more self-respect. Folks, so thank you. As for the city staff, you guys are absolutely amazing.
All right, Counselor Hartman?
Um, wow, okay. Um, sorry. Um, okay, well, I just wanted to acknowledge that it's been a year, and it's been a long year. It's been interesting and challenging, but I think that there's been a lot of great growth and clearly some light that has been shown, the work that still needs to be done. I personally am excited for a lot of accomplishments that we've done this year, and both as a council and personally. I'm excited to serve on the newly-formed Women's Caucus and People of Color Caucus for the League of Oregon Cities, and hopefully bringing back some great knowledge from other cities around the area and bring that back to Gladstone. I want to take a moment to welcome a new nonprofit organization to Gladstone called The Living Room Youth. They celebrate LGBTQ+ youth ages 14 to 20 in Clackamas County. And their programming is youth-led, and their services are rooted in youth-adult partnerships. Their mission is creating a supportive and welcoming community for and with LGBTQ+ youth in Clackamas County through advocacy and education. And I am so happy that they chose Gladstone as their new home. They are sharing space in the Quanis Space off of Glen Echo. I was invited to attend Clackamas Service Center's ribbon-cutting of their new warehouse space off of 82nd. CSC is another nonprofit that is an inclusive one-stop community center for individuals and families seeking food relief and resources for improved health, dignity, and stability. They are committed to working through an anti-racism lens and trauma-informed care. And not only do they provide basic food relief, they are a hub for social services such as housing and mental health services, as well as connection for public benefit programs. I'm excited to speak for another nonprofit coming to Clackamas County. HealthShareOregon has an incubation program called All Ready Network. And they are about to launch within our community starting on January 1st. And they service our youth. And one of their many goals is to remove barriers and build new models of care that target poverty, racism, and ableism. And their focus is to ensure that all of our systems are ready to serve all of our kids from their journey to kindergarten and beyond. You can learn more information about them at healthshareoregon.org. And I'm super excited that they have chosen Clackamas County to come. So the school update. Since June, Gladstone School District has hosted 11 vaccine clinics and has provided 1,074 vaccines to the Gladstone community. GHS has their Adopt a Family Program underway, hosted by several of the clubs, including ASC, Key Club, and National Honor Society. And they will be collecting gifts and food that will end up benefiting over 175 of our families. The Gladstone Clothes Closet is open to families to come and shop for free, located behind high school. And our kiddos will be on winter break from December 20th to the 4th. So hopefully, Chief Smurber, you don't have too many calls about kids climbing on the bathroom. A lot, if you don't know, a lot of great legislation passed yesterday. And one of the big ones that I think will hopefully help a lot of our residents is a $250 million package that prevents evictions and provides rental insurance, rental assistance, excuse me. So it's super exciting. Look up all the other awesome legislation that was passed yesterday. And then in regards to House Bill 2001, which is the House bill from 2019 to expand housing choices, Clackamas County is hosting a survey that's on their website to be, to get feedback by January 10th for all of our residents. So please be sure to take that survey, share your thoughts on why it's important to expand our different types of housing choices. And lastly, I just wanted to say thank you to our staff, Chief Smurber, Chief Hoffman. And lastly, I just wanted to say thank you to our staff, Chief Smurber, Chief Hoffman, Director Canna Broili and Tiffany for Patrick. Thank you so much for all of your efforts, everything that you guys do. Administrator Betts, thank you for dealing with such a challenging year and um I appreciate all that you all do and how you lead this team. And happy holidays to everyone and happy new year.
Can I ask a question? Uh, Vanessa, what was the ribbon? Can you go back to the ribbon cutting and in Clackamas County? What was that about again?
It's called the Clackamas Service Center.
Okay.
And their new office is um in the same area as Portland Cider Company.
Yes.
They had a smaller, a very small, like one thousand square foot space um off of eighty, like north eighty second for a little while. And they just got this huge warehouse space. So um I really enjoyed their model, which they they try to empower people power. And so you can go as a volunteer and pick up, you know, for, you know, a hundred houses and take them to people. So I'm really excited that they're able to get that the bigger space because they've been operating out of a really small space.
So it's a food bank or an all over help the neighborhood kind of place?
It it is a food um hub, but they pride themselves on being like a one-stop shop. So they can connect you with um public benefit programs, mental health services, so similar to like an in-person two-on-one. So like you can go there as someone who's low income, no income, houseless. And their hope is to be able to get you um um food, clothing, shelter, permanent housing. Um, so they're, they want to be like that one-stop shop. And I can um, I have the executive director's information, so I can check that out. And um, maybe we all can go for a tour or something.
That would be great. I've heard on um a couple of Facebook posts that there were people in our area that had become um homeless through some horrible situations. But and I thought, you know, where do you, where do you even start? But that sounds like a start. And 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 that would be good information to have. And yes, I would love to go on a tour of that place.
Yeah, and I think it's like a great opportunity once you find people because they then will take and then find the other connections. Like we don't know all the connections. They have all the connections.
Right, right.
It's exciting. I'll be, I'll be, I'll, I'll send that out when our emails get back up.
That would be great. Thank you.
Right, next, Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Counselor Hartman. That was a lot of good information. Um. I I do need to address some stuff that Citizen Osborne um has said. I was disappointed in our um final investigative report. I was disappointed because there, I actually had submitted text messages from my daughter with date stamps from outside our safe way um on the Saturday prior to our city council meeting. Um, Mr. Osborne hadn't been at any of our city council meetings for quite a few months since he'd lost to um Counselor Hartman. So I didn't know what he was, what he was thinking, quite honestly. And I remember very vividly thinking that he said he wanted to embarrass them. And I thought, that's really not a neighborly thing to do. It's not neighborly to want to embarrass anybody. And then when I saw that he was on the city council um asking to speak on Tuesday, I guess, May tenth or whatever day that May meeting was, I had an aha moment that this is when it was happening. So it is not fabricated. Um, I I have conversations with my daughter via text about what he said. My daughter is a, she's twenty eight year old woman who is professional. She is intelligent and she has no reason to lie. And for him to say that probably is what upsets me the most. Um, I will say that I was disappointed in in the investigation and I was investigating, I was really disappointed that all of our councillors did not fully engage in it. That was very, very disappointing because it did cost us money, cost us a lot of money. As far as Mr. Osborne being so concerned about how much money was spent, it made me go back and look. And and Mary, you might remember this, September tenth, two thousand and nineteen, Mr. Osborne produced press credentials where he wanted to attend an executive session. We told him that he would not because as far as we knew, he was not a journalist. He then filed an ethics complaint. The alleged facts are here. Press member filed eth- ethics complaint alleging violations pertaining to O R S one nine two dot six six zero when he was excluded from attending an executive session of city council. Mayor, former councillor Tracy and myself took the day off from work. We went down to Salem. Mister full day's wages, I'm self-employed. Mister full day's wages to sit there for an excruciating hours.
That is scary.
It's very scary. And I was um, I was the stupid one that didn't engage council, so I had to go in by myself. At the end of that, um, our city insurance company had to pay for our our defense, I guess, because we were found like guilty, seven thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
Because we had to hire an attorney.
Yeah, so I'm guessing if Mr. Osborne is so concerned about how much money is being spent, he needs to stop creating situations that cost money. And it was funny, Mary, because I actually, I remember, we were really aligned on that because it was very scary. The whole thing was. And I'm very upset right now. I've had a very horrible week and a lot of people know I have. Um, one of your lines I thought was very interesting was that you actually wrote an op-ed December sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen that said it is outrageous that people create situations in order to have something to complain about. The gloves are off and it will be no longer tolerated. The citizens of Gladstone that voted us into our positions to run the business of the city on their behalf should stand up and let these few individual knows it will stop. That was your comment about Bill Osborne. Um, apparently, I'm the most spiteful, meanest person in town. I have one year left. I'm not putting up with this and I'm not resigning. So I'm just letting you all know that. I'm not resigning and I'm not going to put up with Bill Osborne anymore. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Alexander.
All right, you have a problem. One thing you need to address is um some accountability. Because I've been out, I've gotten, I've gotten signatures for head and parking for totally hundreds of people I can just say I've talked to in the last year. And uh, the the executive session, I made a comment. Two days after the executive session, someone came up. So I'm just going to go ahead. Like Counselor Todd, just put it out there because it's already got put out there. I don't know how. I don't want an investigation. I don't care who said it, but. Right when this happened back in May.
Can can you speak more into the microphone, please? It can off, yeah.
Hello?
There we go.
Right when this happened, um, I I had people coming up to me telling me, oh, your bill's friend. You did the recall. You did that. You gave it to him, right? No, I didn't. And so I went in May and took my own polygraph from the uh vice of an attorney. Here it is. Anybody can see it. I passed with flying colors. I didn't have anything to do with that. And then also, but people, after the executive session, I had two people come up to me and said, oh, you you had a lie detector test, huh? Hmm, I thought that was confidential in an executive session, but obviously not. Here it is. Yes, I did because I already knew what was coming. I'm his friend. I got, you know, they're going to point, point one. So that's still things. So that's okay. That's all right. Because there's a silent majority in this town that I talk to when I'm getting my signatures and see if they're all around town. Hundreds, hundreds of them, and they're tired of it. They want accountability. I don't even think you guys understand how many feel the way they do. They don't want to speak up or get attacked, so they don't do anything. But they did tell me, we elected you to represent us and so you need to represent us. So that's what's going on right now. That's why the reason I was taking places because they're tired of no accountability. So um, what I want to also want to add is I heard a new Instagram town, uh Instagram site in town that wants to spin the investigation report and point the finger at someone, specifically me. Um, so they couldn't prove we did it, the investigation. They they just want, I just want to remind people that slander is a real thing, especially when documented. So please keep the the comments, the accusations and the assumptions coming in. My attorney says the more the better. But the people in this community, you're smart enough to see, know and tell me. They understand and and it's plain as the nose on their face that the drama in this town, who causes it, the drama and the division. So I I only told the truth in that investigation. There were no inconsistencies in my story. The only inconsistencies were in the report itself. And so uh, with that, I'd like to also uh, the community asked me to, and they came to me and they came to me with this and they wanted me to read it. So E, council discussions in decorum. Nah, K, council members who refrain from criticizing or attacking each other, city staff or persons. So on behalf of the citizens, they're allowed to me to represent them. They request that Counselor Hartman would apologize to Counselor Ripley for the blatant and disrespectful personal attack on November twenty twenty one council meeting. So that's what they wanted me to ask and said they'd like to hear and maybe we could get a little healing going into twenty twenty two. So that's one thing they'd like to see or know or hear. I don't know if you want to do it or not. Um, and that um, I hope everyone's healthy, happy, back to work and that the council will reflect on the past year and realize that citizens elect us to do this job for the betterment of the city and not personal, our own personal interest and that it is a four-year commitment. And staff, everybody else doing a great job. Love it. Love it here. Merry Christmas.
Counselor Ripley?
Okay. I have a little list here. I made it to keep me on on track so I don't wander off in the weeds. Um, first of all, I will address your comment about that. The um, they got a hold of me. We had a time scheduled and I think that day I worked fourteen hours and didn't get around to reschedule it. We had contact a couple more times and I've been busy. If I would have any information to give to them, I would have done it in a heartbeat. One of my thoughts why I didn't pursue getting ahold of them because everybody around here knows that me and Tammy have some issues. If I would have went and talked to them, I would have thrown her under the bus. And why, I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus for, if it's a real reason, I'll throw away. But if I have no evidence on something, I'm not going to go and put myself in a position to start bagging off another people. They had access to my emails. They had, they, one of the conversations, I'll give anybody my phone number. You could do, you do whatever they want. They're adding zero information to give them. So I will not apologize to the council for that. I will say you're welcome for me not throwing anybody in the bus. I will apologize to the community for not falling through and doing my due diligence on that. So now I'm going to put a little bit of spin on on my next little thing of notes here. Um, first, well, because of Matt walking out, I'm gonna act it. I was not expecting that. My brain isn't quite in the right spot now. So I have some, I have some observations I have written down, some feelings. I'm going to share a couple of different scenarios with you people. And I'm trying to make sure I'm still talking to this thing, but I hate, if I'm talking to people, I believe you should look at people when you're talking to them. So but I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this from a little different route. And at the end, I will tie it all back to being on city council. So about seven years ago, my oldest daughter was struggling in college, so we decided to send her in and have an A D H D test done on her. And when we did that, my wife said, you're taking one too. So I did. That was the most exhausting six and a half hours of my life. And I'm going to do it again one of these days. So the results of that test came back said I have A D H D, P T S D and that I'm a genius. I have an IQ of a hundred and twenty nine. Uh, my rational thinking test in the ninety ninth percentile, my planning in the ninety eighth and my communication in the ninety seventh. When I read these these results, the communication part, I I kind of ignored that for quite a few years because screw them, forgive me ninety seven. Um, but so when we go back to the rational thinking, the the rational thing is not knowledge, it's not smart. I'm not smarter than anybody else. I am smarter in some subjects than other people. But the way I see stuff, the way the A D H D brain sees stuff, you see things differently. While all those changes came at the fire station, I said, I named every failure point and every one of them happened. Yet I was completely dismissed by everybody else in the city. So now we have a kind of an issue with a lacking there. I've never said I told you so. I'm not a I told you so person. But we need to, we need to look at things a little bit differently here. The communication section of the IQ test, I kind of blew it off for a while, but then I kind of started thinking about it because one area I have problems with is communicating. I'm not very good at talking. I I was taught to read because of my dyslexia and word recognition. So I, if it's a new word or a big word, it'll take me ten minutes to figure out what it says. Because I, it's all word recognition on that kind of stuff. It's kind of interesting. I actually love my brain. We have a lot of fun together. Um, but by the communication, only twenty percent of our communication is verbal. The rest of our communication is our body language, what we're doing, the way we're acting. And when, and I'll tell you right now, Bill Osborne knows who gave him the letter. Go back and watch the video. Watch his face. You will see that he knows what's going on. But that's part of communication. When someone's being straight up with you, you don't see it all the time, but someone's being straight up with you. You 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 see it. And when somebody's pulling your leg, sometimes it's like a, a million lights chasing at you. You can't get away from it. So when we look at communication, Zoom meetings, these are stupid. We can't see people's face. Everybody's faces are covered up. That's the reason I took my mask down right now because I'm not going to hide behind a mask when I'm saying my opinions. And these are all personal opinions. And nothing I'm saying is about any other councillor. It, I I'm gonna, there'll be a couple of topics that I'm using as example, but I'm not talking about any city councillor or anybody else. I'm talking about me because I have a PhD in me. I know me. So a little discussion about me being an Indian. My grandma was born on a reservation. Two of her kids were born on a reservation. My mom was born in Seattle. There wasn't, somebody said that my mom was born on a reservation. She wasn't. So but this is going to be kind of a a little bit longer talk here because I want to, I want to look at things from a different light. People made the comment, are you embarrassed about being an Indian? No, I'm not embarrassed about being Norwegian, English, Scottish or German either. I spent probably like ten years working on my family history on, I started out on Ance, on Family Search, but there's too many errors in there, so I went to ancestry dot com. So on my mom's side, my grandpa, his parents, they immigrated to the United States. He married a half-breed. That's what my grandma called herself. She called herself a half-breed. On my dad's side, there's actually some interesting stuff there because well, I found out where my name comes from. It was the first child that was born in this castle in the twelve hundreds. The castle is named Ripley Castle and the guy moved a friend in. The first kid, that's where my name came from was from a castle name. But the interesting thing, when we want to start talking about about our race and where we come from and all this, of what I have right now, I have, I think, like forty five or forty six thousand people on my family tree. I have found a hundred and sixty seven immigrants, grandparents, immigrants that were born in a different country and came here. So it doesn't matter if I'm part Indian, I'm part Norwegian. I'm a mutt. I'm everything. Everybody that knows me well knows what I have in me. But we fail to look at, when we look at our family tree, we think it centers around us and goes down. It's an hourglass. It goes both ways. People say I'm related to Abraham Lincoln. You might be, but so are about ten billion other people. It's, breeding is like wildfire sometimes. When you start having kids and kids have kids and it's exponential growth. So for me to just pick one piece of what's in my body, I'm not going to have my right hand beat up my left hand because my right hand is Indian and my left hand has Norwegian and my legs have English in them. It's really no big deal. I don't care. It doesn't bother me. Um, so I'm going to do a little bit of a different spin right now. I'm going to talk about a little bit more immigration, but I want to talk about it a little bit differently. In eighteen sixty five, we abolished slavery. Slavery was every country, every nation for thousands and thousands of years. That was just what, that's what you wanted labor. You didn't pay somebody. You made slaves. That's just what happened. And over time in our our evolution of ourselves, we figured out that we shouldn't do that kind of stuff. That's horrible stuff. But when we want to blame white people and people want to tell me that I have white privilege, which I do have a question on that now that now that it's found out that I do have Indian in me, do I still have white privilege? And if I don't, do I owe anything? I'm not paying anything back. So when we look at, when you want to blame a person with white skin for slavery, we also have to remember that those people were sold by their own people. And I was watching Amazing Race the other day. And I was watching Amazing Race the other day, and they're, they're showing a little piece from. Like, is it Archer Tears or something like that? And they knew that once they went through that archway. Which is right by the ocean, they get on the boats, they would never see their country or family again. I never heard that till way after I was out of high school. There's, there's a lot of stuff that we ignore, we don't pay attention to. But when we start looking at some of the other numbers here, and we start talking about immigration. From nineteen sixty five when slavery ended to nineteen fourteen. There's average of five hundred thousand people a year that moved into this country. And that growth has actually stayed consistent since then. And if you kind of look at the numbers on this, you might say that during that time period, there was um. Five hundred thousand people over a sixty five year time period, so you can say thirty million people over that sixty five year time period. We've got two ever sixty five year time periods. With the immigration being the same, we are at ninety million people. That were not in this country when slavery is going on. But. Because of the color of their skin. They are accused of being white supremists, racist, and everything else, when they weren't even here. So let's take a look at what we're talking about and have your data because. The most of the whiteness in me is from Norwegian because they're like really white. They didn't come here till the late eighteen hundreds. They weren't involved in anything. A lot of people out there aren't involved in nearly as much stuff as we want to accuse them of being. But when you go and tell someone they have white privilege. I've worked my ass off my entire life. I have not been handed anything. Anything I want, I work for. I don't have white privilege. When you make that comment, that's a racist comment. Because you're taking the color of somebody's skin and saying they have a privilege. Let's stop talking about the color of people's skin. Because that is racist. Um, a couple of other things that I'm thinking in my head all the time. See here. I think, I think the, the latest thing I've heard some comments on was that the Kyle kid that. Was found not guilty or innocent or whatever he was. And if we look at, if we look at our legal system, there was twelve jurors. The prosecution is gonna pick the most liberal people because it's a gun trial. They want people that don't like guns. The defense is gonna find the most conservative people because they like guns. So you have twelve jury members. And we know the conservatives automatically are gonna vote to make them innocent. But when the other six liberals vote the same thing and you have a unanimous jury. Why are people complaining? That it's. It's a conservative thing, it's a gun thing, is all this horrible stuff. What are we gonna do now? They found him innocent. Yeah, it was found innocent by. Six liberals and six conservatives. So whatever group you want to play with. They all agreed for some reason. So should we be talking about them? Should we be making complaints about these people? I don't think so. Um. And here's, here's another one. This, this is one that it actually, it, my brain likes because it gets to think a little bit. And. This is a change since when I was in high school to what the change is now. I didn't see racism in the eighties. And, and I grew up here in Glassville, there really wasn't much. Diversity in people, but that's because this area, if I were to move to other areas, there would have been more diversity. But this is where my parents. Raised me, so I was not exposed to racism. Or that kind of diversity. And if you want to blame me, you do that. You can blame my parents for moving here. But if we look at social media. When did all these problems, social media is the, the cesspool of deceit. People want to make comments on social media that aren't true. They want to make comments where they're too much of a coward to say to somebody's face. Or they don't have the background. And some, some of the other things, social media, it, it can be great, it can be an incredible tool. But when we're using it to beat people up or attack people or make comments about somebody. You're wasting your time. There's better things to do in life than that. You can get a book. I don't read, but I watch. Educational stuff on TV, on YouTube. My education, my entertainment for several. My mom was probably several months when I was repainting my Jeep. I'd have my laptop in the shop and I'd be watching math videos while I sand in the paint off the car. There's always something you do to improve your brain, to continue to. To grow as a person, to be more responsible, to be. More mature. Maturity never stops. If anybody, any younger person thinks that they're mature, and you see it when kids go out of high school, they all think that they know everything. We know they don't know anything. But their opinion is they know everything. But one of the problems that, where that we see, and we've, we've passed something a while ago talking about, let's not, we want to end bullying in school. We want to end racism in school. You're wasting your time. If you want to, if you want to make an effect on racism, on bullying. You need to, you need to look at the way our brain processes of, processes information. So when the kids go to school and the teacher in the morning says, don't bully, don't be a racist. And then they go through the rest of their day. The kid's gone from school. They, I'm not blaming rap music, I'm not blaming YouTube, I'm not blaming movies, but if you take all that step and look at the content and the language and the words being said, and then that kid goes to sleep. The, the converting from short term memory to long term memory, you're gonna convert. The stuff that you're gonna say the most information on is what's most. Vibrant in your head, the most details, the, the most accuracy, and then you're gonna remember other stuff, but not quite as important. So you've really learned how to be a gangster and how you can make millions of dollars selling drugs. But all the numbers is something about bullying earlier that day. So if you want to end some of this stuff, go to Hollywood, go to Nashville, go to the school district. Change this time for the schools from starting in the morning to have it start at two or three in the afternoon, have it end at nine o'clock at night where the kids go home and go to bed. When they convert the short term into long term memory. They're lying. There's some interesting stuff there when you start looking at the way the brain works, and I, I do a lot of. I won't say research on it, but I'm interested in how my brain works. I'm interested about my ADHD, I'm interested about my IQ, and I've done a lot of research on that. So. Social media, give or break. The other thing that we need to remember is everybody out there has an opinion. I have millions of opinions. Everybody in this council has millions of opinions. Me and the mayor have one difference of opinion. We probably have a million things that are completely in common because of that one difference, and I've just thought about this myself. And I'm not saying I want to reconcile with you because I disagree with and the way it went about. But I will apologize for letting one thing come between us, and for that I do apologize, Sammy. Um. But how many times do we have millions of things in common with somebody, but one little thing, they're the worst person in the world, we hate them, we don't like them, we don't want to talk about them, we don't want to talk about them online, we're gonna beat them up here, beat them up there. You guys need to find a hobby. Because everybody gets their own opinion. And everybody opinion is valuable to them, but how do we form our opinions? We can form opinions by life experiences. It's probably one of the best ones. If you take an assault victim, they're gonna have a different view on being assaulted than anybody else. I've never been assaulted.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I need to step out now, but I really need you to think about like the analogy you just used. The analogy you just used is that a small victim might have a different perception. A person of color might have a different perception.
Yes, they will.
There was bullying in even the eighties. So I do need to step out now.
There was nothing like this, and if you listen to like two, three long minutes, you'll understand. But go ahead and leave, and I won't talk to you. So. Now that we know that. I can have my opinion on this topic. Um, and at least my opinion is based off of education, rational thinking, and an IQ and facts. It's not based off of personal feelings. But the other way that we form opinions, be twice personal experiences, we know people who've gone through personal experiences. And we form opinions off that. We hear stories from people. We can form opinions, we can read stuff and form opinions about that. But the key is everybody's entitled to their own opinion. I can have whatever opinion I want. Every other councillor and person in this room has the right to have their own opinion. It doesn't matter. You're an individual, you're different from everybody else, your opinion is no better than my opinion. Unless you can put some data on it. If somebody wants to. Argue one of my opinions, I wrote a three, four, five, rest her further, you can come down and do that if you want to have. Uh, intellectual conversation. If you want to have an emotional conversation. That won't happen. But if you want to have an intelligent conversation. I'm home every night. So how do I wrap this back into, I'm kind of skipping pieces because today's kind of where, where tonight is. So how do I tie this back into being on the city council in Gladstone? Do you have any idea? No? Any idea? Chad, do you have any idea like what my story has to do with city council?
Roland.
Okay, so let me tell you what has to do with being on city council. Not a thing. And I'm gonna make a promise right now. After tonight. If it doesn't have to do with city business with our infrastructure, with our departments, if it's personal opinion or feeling based, I'm not talking about it. I'm gonna talk about city business. Because my opinion is different than everybody else, my intelligence is different than everybody else. And we don't need to have these debates. We're all in the same town, we're the same group, we need to start acting like we really care about each other, and we need to let people have differences. We don't want to all be the same because that'd look kind of funny if everybody is exactly the same. If you look at, an example of, of, you, you don't build a car motor out of. One part. You've got thousands of parts in there. Take one part out, the car's not gonna run. It takes every different personality and opinion to make life go. Everybody's opinion is important. But let's let people have their own opinions. Um. So that's why I promised it, that the people on here, if you want here in the community, if it is not city business, I will not be talking about it. If I am talking, I'll be arguing the point to see if the city business is not. If it's something I agree with, I'm gonna vote no. Because it's not city business. We aren't, the city is not in the business of making a race feel happy, feel comfortable. All your little emotional issues were, we, we have departments that have. Have some issues in them right now that we've ignored because we've wasted time talking about other stuff that we're really not gonna have any effect on. Because you're, when you're firefighting and you could ask the fire chief this, if you have a fire and you blow your, you're shooting your nozzle through that fire for like, let. Let's say an hour, will it put the fire out, chief? If your water's going through the flames. It won't have any effect. We have to get the, the seed of the fire to make any difference. The seed of the fire is in our schools. Well, I'll take that back. It is kind of in a minor way, but that's, the part with our schools is, there's a lot of parents out there that are bad influence on their kids. Kids emulate their parents. Kids repeat stuff to their parents, say, whether they have the, the rational part of their brain is developed enough to understand what they're saying. They don't know what they're saying. Their brain hasn't been maturing, it's gonna keep maturing throughout their entire lifetime. I learn stuff every day. I make it to go. If I don't learn something from somebody, then I learn something every day. And some of the best people I learned stuff from are in their nineties. And I'm waiting for. The last thing I learned to use it. I haven't told anybody yet because it will ruin it. But I learned a couple of good points. So those are my opinions. They have nothing to do on city council. They have nothing to do with anybody in this room. So let's stop talking about personal opinions, personal feelings, let's talk about city business. Let's keep, get the city back on track. Because some of these, all we do is run around beating everybody up. And I am very sorry that Tracy Todd, that her walking out before I finished talking, that. I'm sorry Tracy, but that was rude. If you would have stayed a couple more minutes, I think you might have had a different impression. If you didn't, or if somebody is really offended by something I say. Find a psychiatrist and go take an IQ test. And look at your numbers there and try to figure out, just because you, if somebody has a little IQ, they could still gain knowledge. There's no limits to knowledge. I don't care who you are, what color you are, how tall you are, how big you are. Everybody has the potential to learn. I'm have ADHD, I'm dyslexic, I can't read, I do word recognition. But. They say ADHD is a learning disability. I can guarantee I learned ten times better than most people in this room because I learned differently. I learn from hands on. It's not a disability, it's a difference. But we look at disabilities, we look at all these little issues. We just need to give a break. If you're not increasing, improving your life, if the decisions aren't gonna affect you or your family, that's where priorities need to be. My priorities is my wife and my kids. My priorities aren't as much as the city, especially the way the city has treated me the last several years. And being discredited for everything I say. But I'm letting that go because I see a bright future here. I see some great things coming up. And I, I wish Matt was still sitting there to be involved in this, and I wish. Tracy wouldn't have gotten up, but that's where life is. So I am done talking. Uh, the only other thing that I will say. Real disappointed with the fire chief sitting here in the holiday season. I would have liked to have talked about some fire safety. Um. So, and I, and I'll just share a couple of things real fast. When we were at Farm Marshall in town, his boy did a, um, a science project on. The stuff you pour into your trees so they don't catch on fire. And then after Christmas, they had two Christmas trees. He had a test tree. They had this. Can you help me on what that's called? There's some fire, it's a fire retardant you can put in your Christmas water. And then afterwards, we lit both the trees on fire. The tree with the fire retardant on it, it took us quite a while to get it burning because it wouldn't burn. The other tree was gone instantly. When we put dry combustibles in our house, we're asking for problems. We're lighting candles, we're. We're putting fires in our fireplaces and half these fireplaces in town should be condemned. If you have cracks in your mortar, do not use your fireplace. If there's black stuff coming out of your fireplace. That's pretty stuff that's leaking, and that means you have a huge fuel load between your liner and your butt. Or in your head. If you're gonna use your fireplace, get your fireplace inspected. But because of the season with, we're gonna have more fires, it, while I'm walking the dogs every day, and like every day a new house has smoke coming out, and some of it smells really good, some of it doesn't. But. We still need to keep our, our neighbors. If we see neighbors gone, they left the candle on. We need to keep off of these things because. December is a bad month for a lot of people, whether it's losing things for fires, it's losing people to suicide. It's, there's, there's so many holidays, everybody's in chaos. They're going, they're, you're running around like a chicken with a head cut off. But. We need to remember what we're doing and what we have in our house, and we want our house to be standing at the end of the day. So that's all I got to say, and I will see you guys next month, and I sure hope it's only city business, because if you bring anything that's not city business. I will do everything I can to shoot it down. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. I, I'll be really quick. I just have a couple of things. Um, first, the food can tree is open from three to six on Thursdays at the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church Chalks Len Echo. Um, located in the back portable building. We are still desperately looking for volunteers and donations, so if you want to get connected with Alex, let me know. The Parks and Rec Board meeting last night went over the status of the Meldrum Bar site plan. Um, stakeholders meetings are being conducted shortly. They're, they had an in-depth discussion regarding the validity of the RC Car Group considered as stakeholders. They discussed setting standards for park equipment such as benches, picnic tables, and garbage cans, and they split the task up between the members to look at options. They went over their wish list for capital improvements at the Nick Shannon and Robin Hood parks, and they pared the list down because it was quite large, quite expensive. They also reviewed their work plan, but my computer cut out, so I wasn't able to watch that part of the meeting. Um, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. Meeting, um, the meetings are gonna be focusing hard on transportation, specifically the I twelve five tolling. And priorities for the infrastructure bill. C four as a body has sent a letter to the state and ODOT outlining our concerns with tolling and the diversion impacts our cities will have. The conversation is continuing, and we are hoping to have strong voices at the state level helping us find a path. Forward that will not negatively impact our communities. And yes, please get your, I think most of the comments from this last round of ODOT. Community outreach was from Clackamas County, so we need to continue that. We need to just flood them with our opinions. Um, the holiday tree at the senior center was decorated and lit up right after Thanksgiving, and immediately. That same night, the star on the top of the tree was stolen. I went out and purchased another one and councillors Alexander and Darlington helped put it up. Um, a few days later, that star was stolen too, along with some of the ornaments and. Families have been putting ornaments on the trees and a good chunk of those have been stolen. Um, so I could look at it in two ways. Either there's a family out there that desperately needs ornaments, and if you do, if you fall in that category, let me know, and I will certainly. Fennel boxes of ornaments your way. Um, or you can look at it, this is just pure vandalism and, um. And I want you to know that by doing this, this is, we've been doing this since two thousand and sixteen, and for some people, this is where they go and take the, their, their yearly family holiday picture. This is important to some people, and this is a symbol of our holidays. Um. So I will probably be removing the ornaments because I, I want to keep them safe for next year. I don't want anybody else's ornaments to be at risk. So, um, I want whoever is stealing all the things to know that it is on them, that these ornaments are gonna be gone, and we will not have our lovely holiday Charlie Brown Christmas tree. So that's all I have. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn, please?
I make a motion, we adjourn this meeting.
Wait a second.
I'll say it.
Motion made by councillor Darlington, seconded by councillor Alexander to adjourn. Any discussion? I don't see anything. Could you do a roll call vote, please? I don't see anything. Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Darlington.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, and I want, there's still four here, so we do still have a quorum. Um, so the meeting is adjourned at, pardon? Five, excuse me, sitting here, four. Uh, meeting's adjourned at eight forty PM. Thank you.